I'm going to go ahead and call the City Council's special meeting for Tuesday, September 11, 2018, to order. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Kristi Mauchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Karen Moran. Councilmember Tom Hornish.
Mayor Jason Ritchie. Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Romero Valderrama.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Ross, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, could I make a motion? I'd like to move that we have 30 seconds of silence, given that it is September 11.
Do you want to do it now, or do you want to do it when we come back?
We could do it.
So there might be more people here?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Yeah. That's a great idea.
I would really like to.
Yep. Agreed. So the council is going to do a training session, and so we will not be live-streaming the training, but we will come back on video when the council is ready to reconvene, which our schedule is slated for 7:00 p.m. And if we finish early, then we'll be back out early. Okay. All right. I am going to call us back to order here. We actually have already started the meeting. We had a training session initially, so the first thing we need to do is approval of the agenda. So are there any objections to the approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make an amendment. If we could change the agenda to have the executive session before the discussion on concurrency?
Okay. Great. It's been moved and seconded that we move the, or I guess, put in, it says, if necessary. So put in an executive session prior to, what agenda item number is that?
That assumes there is an executive session?
I think they just asked, I think he just asked for an executive session to be put in front of item number four.
Correct. That's what he said.
Yes.
We would then cite what the executive session is for, correct?
Of course. Of course. Okay. So all those in favor of the agenda as amended with the executive session in front of item number four, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. By vote of 7-0, the agenda is, has passed. Next, we will have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person, or five minutes, if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 p.m. end of business day to the city clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware that council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. Okay. First, I have Paul Stickney.
I don't know. It was a bad omen last time.
Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. My presentation this evening furthers recent handouts and emails to the city. And this, you know, title that's on the screen, I think, is the real issue in Sammamish. Traffic concurrency is a very important issue. However, it is a symptom of two higher-ranking ailments. The first and foremost is land use pertaining to the Sammamish private-built environment, and secondly, lack of capital spending on roads. If we make changes as a community to our land use policies regarding housing, that can yield the largest reduction in holistic traffic possible beyond what is currently planned for and zoned for in our comp plan. What I handed out tonight is a packet of four pieces of Sees candy. Two are nuts, and two are chews. Two are light, two are dark. They represent a wide array of what I'm going to talk about. First, let's talk about nuts. When it comes to housing and traffic in Sammamish, most people are nuts about their position, meaning they're very passionate and enthusiastic and certain on their position regarding housing and traffic. And those same folks, they don't feel that if somebody does not agree with them, they think that those people are nuts. So there are two reasons to use the word "nuts." In Sammamish, I've come up with a term, you may or may not like it. I call it the "nuttiness housing continuum." It spans from no growth on one end to induced maximum growth on the other. Our position that we have been espousing in our internal housing balance is, you know, position number four. How do we, as a community, get past hard and fast, polarized divides of all the nutty positions, passionate, polarized positions? The way to get past them is by finally confronting, facing, and studying the chew. The chew is what to mediate, ruminate, mull over, ponder, reflect, study. What is it? We need to know our housing need gaps, housing wants, pros and cons of meeting wants and gaps, the effects, short, long, and midterm, I said that ass backwards, and then get unity from public consensus on all of that information. The chew, those five topics, which I could spend hours on, which is the reason I'm not, I'd be happy to meet with you individually and talk about them, but the chew has never informed housing nor traffic policies in Sammamish. I came up with a quote with my neighbor Dick. It's reminiscent of, you know, JFK. Ask not if the city should downzone single-family housing and upzone multifamily housing. Ask instead, to what extent? Do both. Conclusions: choose your concurrency, then pick up the comp plan and modestly optimize and change it, then develop transportation master plan, and then reevaluate concurrency. And at the next week's meeting, I'll be covering these four topics and more.
Thank you. Next, I have Bill Barnes, followed by John Galvin, and then Deb Sogi.
Bill Barnes, 21352 Northeast 9th Place. I did not grow up in the state of Washington. I grew up in Massachusetts in a small town called Groton. During my youth, that town was primarily known for its farms and its orchards, and it was a medium-to-low-income town. During the tech boom of the late '90s, early 2000s, Groton was about 15 minutes outside of Boston. Groton saw some expansive growth, similar to the growth that Sammamish is seeing right now. And they followed some of the same practices that Sammamish is following, one of which was a moratorium. Didn't last very long. I think it was about 18 months. Then they started doing large amounts of land acquisition. They started putting minimum acreage requirements on building. And over the course of 10 years, something else happened. The towns around Groton started accepting and not putting so many limits. And what happened was businesses were welcomed in there, they were not welcomed into Groton. And now what's happened is Groton has lifted a lot of regulations. They're actually very friendly to businesses, but it's become too expensive for businesses to move into Groton. And I'm afraid that's what's going to happen to Sammamish. I don't think we can survive as a bedroom community. I think we need to find some balance between the level of businesses we have and the level of residents we do. One final note. I was here, I believe, in June, and it was when councilmen, I believe, Ross and Moran, they had gotten back from their Vancouver trip. And they spoke about someone saying that the moratorium would last three years and saying, "That's ridiculous. That won't happen." I don't think that will happen. I'm not a betting man, but at the same time, I wouldn't call it ridiculous, primarily because I know history has a tendency of repeating itself. And I know when Sammamish started, it started with a moratorium. Now, granted, I know that none of the council members that are here were actually on that council, and I'm sure most of the council members are aware of that. But that moratorium started, I believe, because of drainage issues. And once the drainage issues were resolved, it stayed in place. I hope that doesn't happen in this case. I'm by nature optimistic, but I'm still skeptical. I move, sorry, I strongly submit that this council remove, or let the moratorium expire this October. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have John Galvin, Deb Sogi.
John Galvin, 19502 Southeast 16th Street, Sammamish. What to say after 20 years? One has possibly said it all. I think what we have is a situation that can be very frustrating to the people who get up here and speak to you. We have people trying to present a rational argument to people who are basically irrational. We're saying, here are all the cons, the pros. Compare them. Here are the pros. Here are the cons. Should be a nice, easy, rational decision. That's our approach, but you are going, for some irrational reason, to choose that which has all the cons. Somebody else gets up, gives you a nice little metaphor about the chocolates, and I'm going to give you more data, and you ignore it all. We get frustrated, and somebody there is emotionally fulfilled. You know? So what do we do? At best, let you, and this happens often in counseling, you let the person face the consequences of their irrational behavior. So you sit back and let them destroy themselves to a certain point. Hopefully, you can grab them before they really go under, stop them from committing suicide, stop them from putting themselves into a situation where they cannot succeed. So here we are tonight, and you have a choice of maybe shifting and becoming rational enough to get us back on track dealing with real issues, or you can play out your emotional game, self-destruct. We have a council that's not functional. We have staff who are just overburdened by unnecessary work. We are not compliant with the GMA. We are not getting grants. We're not, you know, implementing plans that took years and years to develop. So we really have a critical impasse here. Reason and irrationality. Good luck. Probably go home and watch it, because there's going to be a long executive session. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Next, I have Deb Sogi, followed by Matt Wilson and Eva Otto.
Deb Sogi of the Sammamish Chamber of Commerce, 704 228th Avenue, Northeast, Sammamish. And you've heard it from me before, and you'll hear it from me again. I am the voice of business. My job is to relay to you what's happening with business around town. I did some last week, or a couple weeks ago. Today, I just want to say that the city's moratorium is sending a very negative signal to prospective retail employees and land developers, telling them to stay away. I can understand this, because many of them want to meet with me. They talk to me. I have a meeting on Thursday with a potential business for Sammamish, but they're very concerned about the moratorium and if it will continue, when, and if, when will there ever be openings to build there? Any delays of progress in Town Center freezes the ability to develop housing choices, choices like affordable homes for our teachers, et cetera, while other regional partners are developing these affordable homes. They're developing housing choices. The plan was made in 2008, very carefully, to take care of mixed-use and housing choices in the Town Center, so that it would be in one core area that would not affect the rest of Sammamish so greatly with sprawl. We don't want these little neighborhoods popping over, popping up everywhere. We want to keep them in one core area. Multihousing, retirement homes, affordable housing units, all of these are important for steady, lifelong living in Sammamish. A lot of us don't want to leave Sammamish. We like it here. I started in the '80s here. I'd love to stay here, but the affordability gets more difficult. Like I said, the other cities are zooming past us with all kinds of development that's helping their citizens. I remember telling one of our earlier councilpersons back in 2007, who did not want business development here, that it will come, and it's how you plan it that matters. She didn't believe me, but it is how you plan it. And the Town Center in 2008 came out with a great plan, a plan that was created to create a lively, mixed-use presence in the heart of our city that would take on a lot of the GMA. I continue to hear discussions about intersections and looking for improvements to the concurrency plan. The old one doesn't work, the new one doesn't work. It seems like we're going around in circles. Many of us are seeing this as a way to delay growth, and I hope that's not it. I know you want to get the model perfect, but no model is perfect. I encourage you to listen to staff as they relay recommendations to you, because they know what they're doing. And I encourage you to look forward to better development, better growth. Thank you for what you're doing out here with the turn lanes. That's a big, big benefit to us. But I also want you to move on with city business. There's so many other things to take care of. So thank you for your time, for listening to me again. I'll keep talking. I know that some of it may not make sense to you, but believe me, it makes sense to the businesses. And by the way, it's hard to get business to come and talk to you, because evenings are difficult for them. They're working, and also, it's difficult for them to come up in public and talk, because they're a little bit fearful of politics. So I am the voice for them, but there will be others coming. The Tanur restaurant is here tonight. He had to leave cooking for his dinner guests at the restaurant to come and speak. But thank you for listening. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Oh. Mr. Wilson? Thank you. Thank you.
I also represent the Sammamish community, so I think I can take five minutes. Sammamish Muslim Association.
I think it needs to be an organization that's recognized.
Is it an organization?
Yes.
I thought you said Sammamish community?
Sammamish Muslim Association.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Thank you.
Just need your name and address.
My name is Wasim Fayad. I have three addresses here in the Sammamish, so I'm going to state one of them. 42 210th Place, Southeast. So my name is Wasim, and Jennifer, my wife, and my family and I are longtime residents of Sammamish. I am also the founder of the Sammamish Muslim Association, the Sammamish mosque here up the street, where we were able to build a vibrant Muslim-Sammamish community in the heart of Sammamish. We love Sammamish, and we plan to make Sammamish our home for years to come, God willing. We recently invested our retirement in Sammamish by establishing the Tanur restaurant in the new Sammamish village. We were very excited to see that Sammamish is growing in a way that provides its residents an opportunity to be entertained and have good dining options without having to commute out and back into the city. With Tanur, we are contributing to reducing the traffic in and out of the city by allowing the Sammamish residents to have a good dining option in Sammamish. At Tanur, we have a good start in terms of business. We're doing well, for a starter. We are doing okay during weeknights and pulling most of our weight over the weekends. On the other hand, we are struggling during lunch on weekdays due to the lack of vibrant business community around us. I am paying more in labor during weekdays for my employees during lunch than I'm producing in terms of sales. In order to be able to sustain our business and to keep Sammamish business within the city of Sammamish, we need to provide more diverse options for dining and shopping. Last holiday season, in September and December, our Tanur business suffered a huge loss due to the fact that most people had to travel outside of the city. They had to go to Bellevue and Redmond, and then create congestions in traffics going in and out of the city to do their shopping, leaving us behind, where we were left like in a ghost, it was a ghost town here in Sammamish. We believe that holding a moratorium on the new Town Center development is hurting Sammamish and those who make Sammamish not only their home, but also their livelihood. We ask from the city council members to lift the moratorium on the Town Center development and to enable Sammamish to become self-sufficient in terms of dining and shopping options. This will reduce the need for residents to drive to Bellevue and Redmond to do their shoppings. Instead, they will, it will keep their business within the city of Sammamish, creating more jobs. This will also reduce the traffic in and out of the city. Thank you for understanding and taking this feedback from a hard-working Sammamish family, and we would like to ask officially the council member to lift that moratorium, because I think it will do nothing except help businesses and help Sammamish retain the business within Sammamish and reduce traffic in and out of Sammamish. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Matt Wilson, followed by Eva Otto.
Hi, Matt Wilson, 23860 Northeast 8th Street. Here this evening, really just provided some guidance earlier today regarding specifically my property, which has been tied up in a long-plot acquisition from a builder. And throughout the process of having the property evaluated, and this contract or this property was really presented to the city ahead of the moratorium and therefore satisfied the criteria for being evaluated, but has since been identified as a property that would be better purchased by way of a short plot. So we have a situation where we were pursuing a long-plot scenario, and now it is, it's being evaluated as a short plot. It was grandfathered as a long plot. The outcome of a short plot would actually be a lower impact from a property, number of properties and homes built on my current piece of real estate. And so what I'm looking for really is more guidance, or if there is some guidance on whether or not, or how I should pursue some sort of an exception to be able to continue to process my property with the city in the form of a short plot versus a long plot as part of a long-plot assemblage. So that's what I'm here for tonight. I'm not sure necessarily who specifically to talk to about making that argument or case, but I'm looking for direction.
I was looking in the back of the room to see if there was anyone from community development that might be able to assist you. I don't see anyone back there at the present moment.
If, Madam Mayor, if Mr. Wilson will come in tomorrow, he can see me, and I'll direct him to the right parties, and we'll see if we can't get your answer that you're looking for.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Next, I have Eva Otto, followed by Suri Yang, and then James Eastman.
Hello. My name is Eva Otto, and my address is 4031 Evanston Avenue in Seattle, Washington. And tonight, I've brought a PDF to share with you, something that you're familiar with. It's a little page from history. It's the Growth Management Hearing Board's decision against the city of Sammamish due to the moratorium, and I'm going to read the area below. But before I read that, I want to talk about something that's already been mentioned tonight, the fact that history has a tendency to repeat itself, and that I think that the goodwill in this town regarding the moratorium and the concurrency issue over the last year is just growing thin, and I'm hoping that it won't expire, and I'm hoping that the moratorium will expire. So I want to talk about really three groups of people who have been materially damaged by the current moratorium. You've heard me talk about the landowners. I've been here multiple times, saying that the values of the land in Sammamish are significantly less than their counterparts in Issaquah, Redmond, Medina. I mean, look around. It's fact. So the landowners have been materially damaged by this moratorium. You've heard tonight that the business owners have been materially damaged by this moratorium. Retail can't get enough customers. They can't afford to move in. You've got businesses like Metropolitan Market who are waiting for the thousands of units that you promised would come and fill their stores, and that's what their business model is based on. Instead, they've got food rotting on their shelves. So again, the business community has been materially damaged. Thirdly, the city of Sammamish has been materially damaged over the last year. We've spent, what, half a million dollars, maybe a million dollars on concurrency issues, on staff time, on lost opportunity costs. You've had key management leave over dysfunction in the city. So the question is, after last week's meeting, and none of the solutions that have been presented are acceptable to this council, where's the emergency? Where's the concurrency emergency? I think that if the Growth Management Board were here today, in front of us, they would most likely say about this moratorium the same thing that they said in 2005. I'm going to read it for you. "The board was persuaded that the city's actions in adopting ordinance 02005-169 was clearly erroneous and noncompliant with the GMA. The board concluded that in acting the moratorium ordinance, the city failed to be consistent and implement its comprehensive plan, failed to comply with SEPA, and failed to consider and be guided by the goals of the Growth Management Act. The board entered an order of noncompliance and remanded the moratorium ordinance to the city, concluding that the moratorium ordinance substantially interferes with goals 1, 2, 4, and 7 of the GMA. The board invalidated the ordinance." So I just wanted to share that with you as a reminder that we should let this moratorium expire and not use it as a development tool. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Sung Yang, followed by James Eastman.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. My name is Sung Yang, 1403 Third Avenue, Seattle, Washington. I'm a partner with Pacific Public Affairs and a proud and pleased to be part of the STCA team working on the Town Center Development Project, and I'm here tonight providing comments on STCA's behalf. From the beginning, the moratorium has been an unexpected and frustrating situation for STCA, and I'm sure, as you've heard from many other property owners, businesses, and those who have labored so long to help realize the Town Center plan. We appreciate commitments to lift the moratorium, but that has not happened yet. And still, STCA has navigated its way forward, working with city staff and council with the expectation that the moratorium would be short-lived, that progress- progress could resume on delivering a town center that will become a jewel in the heart of the city and really the entire East Side region. Toward that end, STCA has continued during this moratorium to expend considerable resources in property acquisition and planning efforts. STCA is excited to move forward with the application process for the first limited phase of development. STCA has previously expressed its views on why the city council should conclude its work around transportation concurrency and lift the moratorium, and I'm not going to repeat all those comments, but would like to emphasize the following two points. First, the city is in the midst of a multimillion-dollar construction project to improve and expand Southeast 4th Street. The prime purpose of this project, as stated in the city's applications to WashDOT, is to accommodate and facilitate development within the town center. It is confounding that, having accepted and appropriated millions of taxpayer dollars for this project, the city continues to place a moratorium on precisely the development that project was intended to serve. We would respectfully submit that the city is putting itself in a perilous position regarding future public funding for projects if it continues to halt the submittal of permit applications for the development that millions of dollars of state and city funds have been expended to facilitate. Second, city staff has provided the council with multiple options to complete the concurrency update without further moratorium extensions. In fact, the council had everything it needed to complete the update in July, and again, in response to council direction to include 244th in the concurrency update, city staff devoted several additional weeks of work to develop that option, only to see it too rejected. It is time now to bring this long and expensive process to a close. STCA and others have waited patiently for almost a year now. All that's needed now is ongoing adjustments to concurrency that will always be possible. It's an iterative process, but in the meantime, it's time for this moratorium to end. And I would just add that the moratorium is unnecessarily dividing Samamish as a city. It's been all-consuming. It's time to show that Samamish is better, can be better, and grows smartly. Please lift the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. James Eastman, and if there's anyone else that would like to address the council, if you can just line up.
James Eastman, 196 Avenue Northeast, Big and Proprietary. A lot of tension in the room tonight. I too share that same tension. In fact, a few months ago, I went to my wife after me, and I said, "I can't take it anymore. These meetings are driving me nuts. All we talk about is traffic and how to study it. This is worse than listening to you." She said, "I beg your pardon?" And I said, "Yeah, when I listen to your problems and offer advice, you come up with a new problem the next day, and it's on to the next problem." But this is like a recurring tape. So she told me that I needed some therapy and I needed better listening skills. So she arranged me an appointment with a psychotherapist. I said, "Hey, I got two big problems. I'm not a good listener with my wife." And he said, "Let's start there." We practiced some listening skills and some role play, and, you know, he said, "You need to just take a deep breath, calm down, and listen." And he said, "What's your second problem?" I said, "No, we took care of it. I'll just practice all the skills, and I'll be okay." He said, "No, what's your second problem?" I said, "The city of Samamish." He told me to run like hell, and he opened up his cash drawer and gave me all his money. So I went home to my wife, and I said, "I want a divorce. I'm out of here. I'm gone." She said, "No, no. Let's go back to the psychotherapist. Let's have marital counseling." We went back, and his sign said permanently closed. So the last couple of months have been really stressful for me, but I'm happy to report tonight that I found my therapist, Mr. Galvin, in the audience, and when he told me to run like hell, he didn't mean for my wife. So I'm hoping that she takes me back. But no, on a more serious, well, somewhat serious note, we've been talking about this forever. And I think, man, I was looking down at the studies done on Eastlake-Samamish Parkway. I've owned land down there for 11 years, and at one time, we were going to spend $55 million. We all know the backstory. And we never did because we don't want to spend the money. But it fell intersection concurrency way back then, and now we say, "Oh, there's no intersections to measure down there." No, that's not true, because I have the documents showing they all fell. So we came up with Table T8, and we just make a number higher than what the intersection capacity is, and, you know, that way we don't fail. But I think to myself, well, how do we get all these people to trail? Because I try to cross, have to work with my kids to the trail every night, and I can barely cross the street. I have to yell at my kids to stay back behind the white line constantly. And then I take a step out into one lane of traffic, hoping that my big size will keep one lane stopping, and then I got to do the other lane and hope they all stop, and then I wave my kids to cross the street. So I don't know. Is it 7:40? Is it 20 to 8? Is it 19:40? T minus 1900 minus 20 minutes? I mean, it's all failure. So we can talk about it any way we want. We need to come up with some solutions. Eastlake-Samamish Parkway, we talked about building a bridge or maybe a ferry, but what about just sticking a bus that goes down there? What about some solutions that people can actually cross the road and use the trail? How about getting people to light rail? I spent 25 minutes trying to exit 520 today. You know, I'd gladly use light rail and ride a bike the rest of the way or hop on a bus. Anyways, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Catherine Freidenberg, 22930 Southeast 1st Street. I'm going to keep this real short because I have inundated you all with so many letters. You've heard it all. I don't know how to package it any differently. So I'm just going to ask that we come to a conclusion of the study period and that you select a concurrency model and move the city of Samamish forward. We're being squeezed from both ends, and we're sort of stuck in this limbo state. So I look to you to wrap this up, go into the next phase. You've got a lot of work ahead of you, and we do need to bring some economic development to Samamish. So thank you for your time.
Catherine, sorry, did we get your address? Did we get an address or no?
22930 Southeast 1st.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? All right, seeing none, we are going to move on to new business. First, on our agenda, we have a resolution adopting a new employee handbook and repealing all existing personnel policies and procedures. Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you have in your agenda pack in the evening a new handbook. This was last updated, I believe, in the year 2000. What this new handbook does is bring together several policies and provides us consistency with personnel laws, as those have evolved over the years as well, and also best practices. This handbook has been reviewed by both our city attorney and WCIA, and I'm going to call on Mr. Sugg, our management analyst, and Ms. Bussard to present this item to you, and they will also introduce, I believe we have a representative here from WCIA. So, Mr. Sugg, if you would take over, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I apologize for the delay. Once again, my name is Mike Sugg, management analyst for the City Manager's Office. I am joined by our senior human resources analyst, Mandy Bussard, and we also have Shannon Reganese in the audience. She was appointed by our insurance carrier, WCIA, to help us out on this project. So we did have a quick four-slide presentation, but I think we can just get through it verbally. Bit of background on what we currently have. Our current handbook was adopted about 18 years ago. It's been amended a number of times since through a variety of means. This makes it difficult to determine if we have included all of the amendments to that handbook in the most recently updated version, which is from 2009. In addition, there are a number of policies that just don't exist or are not compliant with recent employment laws and best practices, creating some legal liability for the city, and this is one of the primary reasons why we no longer give copies of the employee handbook out to employees. And I know this has created a morale issue among certain staff members who feel like they don't know what the city's expectations are of them. So we're trying to remedy that with the proposed draft that is in your packet for tonight. And that draft is a completely fresh start. It looked at what we had existing, what other cities are doing with their handbooks, as well as incorporating recommendations from both Kenyon-Dieson as well as WCIA. And you'll see in the resolution that this handbook is intended to supersede all existing personnel policies. This includes two additional documents to the handbook, one of those being the personnel procedures and the other being the supervisor's manual. We won't be getting rid of all those procedures. Our next step will be to sort of comb through all those, develop new where they don't exist, or revise procedures that follow the new policy format that we've developed, as well as keep them all in one central electronic location where all staff can access them. And I'm going to hand it over to Mandy to go over some of the high-level changes in the proposed draft.
Good evening. So I'm going to take over and handle this particular slide we have, which is not an exhaustive list, but some of the major categories of items that we've changed to the existing personnel manuals. The first item we wanted to point out is that there has been no change to the council's authority over compensation and benefit policies. That is stated front and center in the introductory statement to the handbook. And so you do all have ultimate authority over all of those policies, and they do need to be brought to council to be changed. The other two items we have, the second one bolded here says, "A removal of excess procedural language that creates unnecessary bulk or legal liability." As Mike had mentioned previously, we are moving from three different documents, three manuals, into a single employee handbook. What was contained in the personnel procedures manual is just that procedure. So one good example would be procedure around disciplinary action, and what could have been seen as an exhaustive list perhaps of every type of disciplinary action that a manager or supervisor might take prior to termination. We've been advised by legal. As we mentioned, it's been, the document we are proposing has been reviewed twice by two different legal teams, and we're removing that language as to not at risk, excuse me, create risk around our at-will employment. So that's one example of some of the procedural language that we've removed. The other example would be more simply some of the details such as procedure around, for example, our tuition reimbursement program. You know, we've removed from the handbook eligibility requirements, how to submit grades, how to, you know, actually obtain financial reimbursement, items like that, that need not be contained in the handbook itself. The last bolded item you'll see on the slide is revised and added provisions to address new employment laws, of which there has been many naturally since the last full revision of the handbook in 2009. Some major examples are highlighted there in Washington's new sick leave law that was effective in January, a gender pay equity law that became effective in June, items such as provisions for lactation breaks, which are now present that weren't at the time that this handbook was last revised, and then ongoing recent case law that advises our policies. The next slide you'll see is the next steps we are hoping to undertake upon adoption of the new handbook. Firstly, of course, would be to send the new handbook to all staff. It has been shared with directors, deputy directors, and some other key staff for comment and revision, after which, sharing the handbook, we'd like to hold trainings with supervisors and managers and also informational sessions with all staff. So we do have a rollout plan rather than just a, here's your new handbook kind of plan. We are going to update the handbook on a continual basis. We plan to not go so many years without an update in the future. Again, all comp and benefits policies will come to council, but other suggestions of items for change will be collected throughout the year, and we are planning to reduce, excuse me, introduce a new annual handbook on just personnel procedure on the go-forward. And that'll be maintained in a central electronic location that all staff can access. So at this time, I'll turn it over to council for any questions for Mike or myself or Shannon, who's present here as well.
Councilmember Ross.
Well, I saw the presentation earlier, a couple of weeks ago, and excellent job, really well done. One question I had, and I like your standalone policies because it could be more robust and dynamic and updating them separately from the employee handbook. Using tuition reimbursement as an example, it references, see your HR rep. Now, I'm assuming you're retaining those electronically. Is there perhaps a suggestion as to reference where to find it on the HR web rather than a person? Some people would like to review the process and the procedure independent before they see a human being, so that may be a suggestion.
That's a great question, and I would say that it's kind of a work in progress. As we mentioned, kind of compiling more detailed policies as they're written or rewritten or produced, I think that might change in future iterations of the handbook to say, you know, "See policy number XYZ," and "See HR for additional details." So we are planning to, you know, what's referenced in the handbook right now with regard to tuition, for example, is that there is a program that it is dependent on the budget, and the nuts and bolts of that will be held for a more detailed policy that we do plan to share in that electronic location and can, once we have those things compiled, numbered accordingly, we can reference those policies.
Thank you.
I don't see any more questions. Is there a motion? There's another button on. Hold on. Councilmember Ritchie.
Probably doing the same thing. Move to adopt.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution for a new employee handbook. Councilmember Ritchie, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you for your work putting in that you did to get us to this point, and look forward to future iterations to make it even better, and look forward to helping and learning and keeping a great staff well-informed here in Samamish. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran. Councilmember Hornish.
Likewise, great work. The one thing I would implore staff is to do this annual update. It's been way too long, so I hope we can continue that.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to adopt by resolution the new employee handbook, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of 7-0, it carries. Thank you both for all your work on that. Okay, next we have a presentation on branding. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, late in 2017, council authorized the staff to apply for a grant from the Port of Seattle for a branding initiative. The goal was to update the presentation of the city's visual identity. And again, I'm going to call on Mr. Sugg to presentation of the city's visual identity. And again, I'm going to call Mr. Sugg. Ed Barlow with North Star Consulting, and I'll let Mr. Sugg introduce him a little more. I would also like to introduce Kelly Hildy, who is our planning manager, and make special recognition of Kelly Stickney. All of those worked on this project and to bring this to you, and we're going to turn it over to them so they can present what has been produced to date.
Great. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and I apologize again for the technical difficulties. Once again, Mike Sugg, management analyst for the City Manager's Office, joined by Kelly Hildy, planning manager out of Community Development, and Ed Barlow from North Star Consulting. Ed flew in today from Nashville, Tennessee, so we are happy to have him here. Tonight, we are here to present the creative deliverables from the city branding initiative that we started at the end of 2017, and tonight's presentation builds on what we presented to the council back So I'll let Ed talk a bit more about that and get into some of the creative deliverables. So, Ed.
Do I need to click anything? Perfect. Well, glad to be back in Sammamish, Mayor, council. Good to have the opportunity to give you an update on this project. And so we'll do a little bit of review before we get into some new content, just so we have the context of the entire project. But as you know, North Star is a community branding firm based in Nashville, but working all over the country. So how did we uncover the brand for Sammamish? And so what we're after is what is distinct and ownable and authentic about a place, and that's why North Star's model moves first from research, then to a strategic DNA statement, that statement of what is distinct and ownable and authentic for this great community. And that provides the foundation on which any creative tools are built, and also action, how you bring that strategy to life throughout the community and with your different audiences. So that first step is research. So we are not going to go back through every piece of research, quantitative, qualitative, done within the community of Sammamish, but also the outside looking in. But just a reminder of all the research that was done as part of this effort. And then you may remember a slide from our last presentation. We showed an hourglass, kind of if you drew an X on a piece of paper. We take all that research in the top of that hourglass, and the neck of that hourglass is what is distinct and ownable for the community. And so for those seeking a wooded respite, Sammamish east of Seattle and along the eastern shore of Lake Sammamish is where elevated standards unite diverse cultures, so you can enjoy the rewards you've imagined. And so a very distinct statement for Sammamish in the area. And so that provides the foundation on which we present creative options and creative decisions are made. And so with the team here in Sammamish, working through that creative process, you can see the approved logo here. We have versions that have city of Sammamish, but also just Sammamish as well. We'll get into some variations of this. So you can see that some of the same elements from your current logo, this is somewhat of an evolution, but some issues that you may have had with your previous logo are resolved with this evolved design of celebrating that place, the wooded respite. You see that the strategy is connected to these tools, giving us that foundation for making these choices. A very crisp and natural color palette to be used throughout the brand, as you put it to work. Very comfortable and attractive and fresh use of color. So one of the tools that we also provide in this process is graphic standards. So these are guidelines on how to use these brand elements, so that you can apply some rules and guides to it, but not too strict. And so these are meant to provide a consistent and cohesive tone and feel to your brand elements. There's some flexibility involved, but still guidelines for making things cohesive. So also through the creative process, we present some visual directions. We show it in a full-page ad format, and so that may be something that Sammamish won't do, but it allows us to show some design elements, headline structures, body copy, general sort of layout. And so you can see cues being taken from the beautiful setting here, but also incorporating logo elements. You can have lifestyle ads for quality of life, but also business focus, small business owners using phrases like branch out, branch out in what you do with your family, branch out in your business opportunity. So ways to use these elements. And shown slightly differently, but the consistency of these elements getting your message across to a particular audience. And so you remember that earlier slide, from research to strategy to creativity to action? We are developing a two-to-three implementation plan for you with this new brand. This is not how and where to place a logo. This is how to bring that strategy to life. And so for the sake, well, let me back up. A lot of folks, a lot of communities will say, we've gone through this process, we have these tools, now what? What do we, how do we start? What do we do first? What do we do next? Where do we go from here? And so that last section is action. We call these brand action ideas. For the sake of this presentation, we're going to organize them in these five areas, but there'll be 12 to 15 different strategies for implementation in your implementation plan, and then many tactics for each of those strategies. And so not everything has visual elements to it. Some aspects of branding, building this for success and momentum and longevity is not very glamorous, or sexy, or even visual, so assigning a brand leader is going to be important for you. There'll be important tools that they will have to communicate. These are tools that the city already uses, and so you already have budget items for letterhead and different elements. So this is just how to bring all of those things together in a cohesive package. You're going to want to educate city employees and other parts of the community on this project and its results and the benefits for them. That's the business community, that's nonprofits, that's neighborhoods, that's schools. And so we will provide you all of these PowerPoint backgrounds, and there'll be greater detail to these things in your implementation plan. Again, you're already communicating with folks in different ways, and so some of these may be longer-term goals. The plan that we developed for you focuses on high-impact, lower-cost things, but you're going to see some things in this presentation that may take some investment. Those are things you can work toward down the road as you have those resources, but these are meant to show what some of these elements can look like and how to use those. Lot of communities put together welcome kits, or even economic development folders, and so you can serve those interests with a single sort of print job, but have different sorts of inserts. So you can see the use of the logo elements, the cover here. This is perhaps more of a welcome kit for residents, because you can see the flexibility that you have, and you can customize things like this as you choose to communicate in this manner by changing those inserts. You currently have a newsletter with MailChimp, which is known for sort of scrolling newsletters. What you want to try to do with your newsletter is to keep the content limited, feature two or three things. In this instance, we sometimes kind of over-brand a newsletter, just because we want to show you the different opportunities to apply the brand, the language, the look, the feel, the tone of the brand. So the masthead here, Every Day Elevated being the name of the newsletter. You can see three different stories there in the middle, and we add a little bit of brand language to the headlines. And then you can see at the bottom or over on the right, featuring an event and things to do in Sammamish. And just underneath that masthead, you have some quick links on ways people can branch out, whether that's volunteering, or whatever options you may have available to the residents of the community. We were asked to demonstrate the brand in an ad for Sammamish days and nights, and so you see a print ad here, but also a small space digital ad, and also for a holiday event. So you can see the subtle use of different brand elements that give this consistent and cohesive feel to all of these elements. And so we have also included a variation of that visual direction. You remember those earlier ones just had the single image. This lets you build into your storytelling. You can branch out and tell the story of a young family, and then how the kids can get involved in community service. Or for a business-focused ad, you attract a young chef, but you also let her branch out, not just in her restaurant, but also in her favorite activity of mountain biking. So the brand built for longevity, giving you things to grow into. We want to demonstrate how different departments can use it. These are our recommendations. You'll have full discretion in how you put these to work, and so we wanted to demonstrate how the logo elements can be used with your police department. Now, for a squad car, you're not going to put, you could put some logo elements perhaps, but the most important thing that it says is police. That's what you want with your visibility, but you can see here with a patch how the police name and the community name can work well together. Showing flexibility with this logo, previously you saw it city of Sammamish, Washington, or just Sammamish, Washington. Parks and Recreation variation here, and used on their trucks. And just for general city vehicles, we're not saying buy lots of new cars or change out all decals all at once, but as you, just like letterhead, you may have a cycle of replacing things. You can then apply these to those new purchases, or as you replace the decal. So very clean and crisp and memorable, identifying your fleet. And so some merchandise or apparel here, if your parks and rec, or different parts of city staff need uniforms, or even for residents to wear their pride. So we're not saying that you need to go out and buy a bunch of things, but people do like to wear their community name on some things. Some folks do to demonstrate their pride as they move through their day or travel far and wide. So just a couple of other examples here for use for city employees and/or residents. Engagement is important, a goal for branding and reaching different audiences, and there's no more important tool than your website. And so we did not do a complete redesign for you. We took elements of your existing site. We changed a little bit of navigation. We kept the number of navigation, so it's not any major change. You can see some subtle branding elements, the same sort of columns that you have. We've applied the color palette, but you can see the be involved, elevate every day, stay informed, those imperatives, trying to get folks engaged and involved. We have added an area you might consider there at the top, and you can do this in different ways, but some secondary navigation that quickly gets to ease of content, so the user experience is fluid. And then we have some areas for different social media pieces here. You can upload, they could upload photos, or you could feature videos, how I live Evergreen, or how I branch out in Sammamish, keeping that content fresh. And so the Instagram or the Twitter feed. And then you can see these language and design elements being consistent through this. So shown with a rotating photo bank, just those subtle little ways. You see a dropdown menu there on the right. And so this second photo with the headline of reach out, that's a group of volunteers, just subtle ways to use your brand elements. And so again, people like to have branded elements from their community. You have great events here, and so things that are focused on those aspects that people will use regularly. You don't want to invest in just tchotchkes and different things. Think about, make some good choices on keeping the brand in front of folks on a regular basis, but things that are of value and that they will use regularly. So it could be totes or bags for the farmer's market, or even for the grocery, the reusable water bottle, and then of course, paying attention to the seasons as well. But you can see the different applications of the logo, but still very consistent. Now, we look at infrastructure in a community as a 3D canvas for a brand. This is not about placing a logo everywhere you can and everywhere you can see, and it's not politically or financially feasible to do all of these at once and completely do that. You may choose one corridor to focus on, and then see what the other signage or infrastructure opportunities are, and develop a five-plus-year plan. And so as I mentioned earlier, we focus on high-impact, low-cost ideas, signage, wayfinding, monument signage. Those take some resources and some planning, and so you don't have to do those immediately. And here is an example of a simple sort of sign that gives a distinct sense of place as you're entering the community using natural elements. That's a metal sign with the logo there. But as I mentioned, monument signage, you have to have the space for it. So this is one recommendation on how this can look at an entry point. And so you can see kind of that logo, those logo elements deconstructed, but certainly attractive and welcoming for residents and travelers. Wayfinding is very important for communities, for residents and visitors that, for whatever reason, they may be visiting, whether it's coming to City Hall or to an event. Here, function is the most important thing. And so the design elements and the application of logo and color here is helpful and it's attractive, but you focus on function first. Then you apply, because some of this has to be read at 30, 40 miles an hour, so you want to pay attention to that first. And so we have, we chose parks, but some vehicular signage. You have parking, you have some pedestrian signage there with the flower basket, and then asset signage there at the trailhead, and then trail markers are just directional signage as with the pedestrians there in the middle. And we just wanted to show one in place. Your palette is supportive of some clean and organized wayfinding here. You want to be, you don't want a bunch of colors behind the text. Because your greens are similar and complementary, you can do that here and still be eligible. You use poll banners throughout the community. It's a great way, never underestimate the power of one. And so this is a great way to create a sense of place. So strong use of the community name, and you can see the elements stretching across both, and so featuring both the natural environment and the family focus. So lots of opportunities here. So that is a quick run-through of some creative applications of the decisions made through this process. That plan will go into far greater depth for you and provide a two-to-three-year implementation plan on how to bring that to life. And there's no one way or right way and pace to do that. And so, you know, different communities go at different paces, because, you know, there are different resources available, different places. And so we're very excited about the results, and certainly do appreciate the opportunity to be your partner in this effort. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Horneish.
Yeah, thank you. I like it. It looks, to me, it looks good. I think you've captured what I envisioned for Sammamish. The question I have, or I was actually just doing a little bit of research, I should have done this before, but I was looking at surrounding municipalities. Bellevue kind of focuses on their high-rises. Redmond actually has trees and buildings kind of in the back. Issaquah, I think, their, I couldn't really find their brand. I think it was salmon, the fish, yeah, which I thought was interesting. And I think yours, if I could just generalize for a second, appears to be more on the outdoors, the trees, and I think that's why I think you've captured what I believe is Sammamish. And I think yours, if I could just generalize for a second, appears to be more on the outdoors, the trees, and I think that's why I think you've captured what I believe is Sammamish. The question I have is, you heard a lot tonight about how we think we want to bring businesses here. How much of the information that you got from people, that you, all the stakeholders that you talked with, outside, inside Sammamish, businesspeople, property owners, how much was there discussed about what is the future of Sammamish and what is that branding of Sammamish in the future versus what it is now? Does this capture more of what it is now or what people want it to be in the future?
Well, it's a great question. We didn't ask exactly that question, but we gathered information to that sort of end. We didn't ask, you know, what's your vision for five years? Now, the attraction to Sammamish right now and what people think will be quality of life, convenience, this beautiful, beautiful sort of setting. And so even as you attract economic development, hopefully that is going to help you attract some of that, but is not going to change because even for, well, let me back up a second. The, the race for economic development often is a race for talent. And so that's why quality of life and those, those interests that focus on the outdoors or the environment or the activity, the recreation, or even the schools and what can be done for the family are going to help you draw that business in as well because those businesses have to have employees regardless of what level they, the employees are, what type of business it is. And so that's why this will serve you well into the future.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Valdroma.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the work and looks cleaner. I like the Pacific Northwest stylish font that's on there as well that had gone in. I have a couple of questions. As I look at our existing logo, we had the eagle on it. And I know in some of the discussions there was following what Councilmember Hornish had said, the kookany was of an interest. What was the reasoning behind taking the eagle off? I understand the, the other ones, and was that something that you asked citizens about taking the eagle off and not putting the kookany on or vice versa?
We did not, during the research process, that's perception research. It's not about designing a logo. We take cues from that research and as, and get to that DNA statement that is the foundation. And so you remember the, the phrase, "wooded respite." And so in looking at the current logo and then knowing that you wanted a similar sort of feel and tone, something that's not a huge departure, but is a little fresher, easier to use, and so it was just the choice to simplify that look. And so the, the bird was not included.
Okay. Another question I have, and it also follows on with Councilmember Hornish had mentioned as far as in the discussions when we were looking at the branding, we wanted to be able to capture some of the future where the city is going. And two items were specifically raised. One was the urban forest management, the thriving urban forest management, and that clearly you've captured there and that part of it to the quality of life. The other part that was mentioned was the town center because one of the things in your own study that you had presented, that Sammamish as far as competitiveness of coming to mind did not rank at the top of that. And some people interpret that, that people were seeing us as dull and having those services that the town center, by which it's been called the heart of the city being raised, would be part of that and that that was going to be incorporated as one of the two pillars. And I do see the urban forest management into that. But as we progress from, some people used to call us the bedroom community and that we're with these new services and that, we would be a family room community to try to give that look into it. I don't know if there was discussions about that or not, but I know initially that the questions, the town center and urban forest management were both mentioned into that just to try to get people to think of where are we going? Where's the future of the city? And would be interested to see what the discussion or reasoning, if that could be incorporated or it became complex, or what was the rationale?
Sure. The, as, as far as incorporating the town center or elements of that, you know, no one logo is going to tell all parts of, of your story. And so that town center story while has, has had, it's taking root, I guess, and, and there is some existing elements there, that's not what you're yet known for. You are known for the elements that you see in this logo. It is an evolution of what, what you had. It will be hardworking for you. And so, you know, logos can last a long time, but if you find that there's something iconic that comes out of your growth with town center, then that's something to consider as you would revisit this process years down the road. But you can see that the town center element, the elevated standard is part of that strategy. It's just you, there, there's not yet, say, a known icon. And so you want people to appreciate what you're offering today with a vision toward the future. And so this, this setting, natural setting that, that you have will be har, a little hard, harder working for you, and you can absolutely deliver on that today and in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I kind of just missed this, but last time you were here, you walked us through the research and you talked a lot about how branding isn't just about a logo, that there's a lot more to it. I feel like when you walked us through this, one is, can you talk a little bit more about sort of what process have you gone through since gathering that research to get to the statement? And I would love it if you could put the statement back up here.
Sure, I can back up.
I think that's really important, and we kind of went through that really fast. And I'd like to kind of let that soak in for a minute.
Sure.
And then, so if you can walk us through a little bit about what process you went through from the research to landing on a statement and a new logo? And then you touched on it a little bit, but to really understand what those next steps are in terms of how do you propose we do things like updating signage and how important is it that, you know, do we have to do it all at once? That would be incredibly expensive. If not, how does one approach that with multiple logos? And, and kind of what is the benefit as we would have to, you know, budget for that and weigh those priorities against other priorities and explain to the citizens, why are we spending money on this? Again, it's not that I don't like it, I'm just kind of trying to understand that process. And then last question, you talked about the website and you had some suggestions, and I know we actually have an ongoing website redesign project. So how are these suggestions being incorporated into the work that we're already doing? You talked a little bit, not just about logos, but navigation and how we, you know, deal with the backgrounds and pictures and things. So I'm just curious how those things are, are working together or not.
Well, this is the statement, as you mentioned, that was presented back in May at the conclusion of that research. So after gathering all of that research, we get to this DNA statement. Obviously, it's not creative language. It would never fit under a logo as a, as a tagline. And so it is meant to guide creative development, but most importantly, that action or putting this brand to life. So you don't want to make this effort about a logo. That's not what this is. It's a very important tool. It's a very visual tool. A lot of people think of branding as a logo, but it goes far, far more than that, far deeper than that. And so after you approved this statement, we then start that creative process. And so we walked through those different decision points that had, had been made, logo, color palette, visual directions. And so that gives us some decisions to work with to then demonstrate how to communicate and present the brand in language, tone, and feel. And so we are wrapping up your implementation plan in the next few weeks. And so you'll have a, you'll have the full final report with all research, the strategy, of course, everything that you saw in May, and then the creative decisions, and then the implementation plan. Now, every aspect of that implementation plan will not have a visual element attached to it. Some of it, like I mentioned, you know, even the organization and the structure for the brand, we will make some recommendations on how you move forward with that. We do not have budget, budget dollars attached to, to any of this. The best step forward is as we present this final report to you, the, the staff and the team can, can study that and then you can match up your priorities. You may do it in a slightly different order than we, we suggest, and that's absolutely fine. You have full discretion from an implementation standpoint, of course, but also creatively. Some communities may make some small, make no changes to our recommendations. Some may make some small, some may make some significant ones. None of those are wrong. And so while you saw the monument, just for, you mentioned signage, the monument signage is significant. And so you can do monument signage that's a little less involved, but we wanted to demonstrate a range of things that you can consider, but you can grow into because you, resources are hard to come by. And so that's why we focus on those high-impact, lower-cost ideas. You're already spending money and, you know, you're already doing website, you're already having letterhead. So other than just some graphic design, sort of setting up your, your templates for, for letterhead, a little bit of time perhaps, you're already spending that money. And so we do our best to give you as many ideas that are lower or no cost so you can start putting things to work. And so you don't need to or have to have some big splash event. Oftentimes, that takes a lot of resources and time to put together, and sometimes that makes it about a logo. And so you just want to try to avoid, avoid that. And so it's a matter of the, the staff looking at what the, the community's priorities are, matching that with resources, and building a schedule toward that. I have some communities that get the report. I have one in California that was able to, they got together two weeks after the report, figured out what they wanted to do in year one and year two, and within the first six months, they had done all of year one. I have some folks that it takes them two years to do the first year. That's both fine. That's both great. So you, you want to start using it and, and letting people react to it and, and get comfortable with it. Not everybody is going to like every decision that you make, and creative is subjective. And so you don't want to make about a line. You want to make it about the statement and what is distinct and ownable and why this is important for your, for your different audiences.
Thanks.
And you asked me a bunch of questions and I--
The only one at the end is, and maybe this one isn't necessarily for you, but it's just, how is, how are your suggestions around the website design? Are they, you know, making it back into our website redesign project? And if so, how?
Yeah, I think the current status of the website redesign, we're, we're working on the RFP to go out and find a consultant to do that website redesign. And I definitely feel that this brand will help influence the end result as far as like color palette, the, the type of font, logo obviously, and just other branded elements. I think it will be incorporated into that, that final project. Thanks.
I don't have any more lights, but I, I do have a couple comments. So I, I think on some of the, the branding material that you brought up, I was looking at it and I was like, that doesn't look like Sammamish at all. There was, I, I appreciate the wooded respite and that's kind of what the, you've heard from the community, but we are an urban city too, and I didn't get that feel from a lot of the material that came up here. It looked very Suncadia-esque, if you will, out in Klielum. So I felt like it was out in the mountains, which, I mean, we have views of the mountains, but we're not in the mountains. So I, I just wanted to at least give that feedback that there is, we are a city and there are amenities here aside from just recreational opportunities that are outdoors. And so if some of that might be highlighted, if I were going to get a welcome package from the City of Sammamish and all I saw were trails and trees and people outside, I would be like, what else is there?
Right. Well, and you, and that's the flexibility of a folder like this. So you, you will want to shoot your photography. We're limited to--
Sure.
--to stock sort of photography.
Yep.
So being able to shoot exactly what is here will, will broaden that message and you'll be able to communicate that, that urban, urban aspect.
Okay. And I wanted to ask too on, on the color palette, because that went by kind of faster. There are two greens and two blues. No, one green, three blues. So my other suggestion would be to limit us to maybe just, and I don't think there's that color in the logo itself, but in the logo, do you have three blues and a green?
Let's back up here. You've got--
It's hard to tell in if it's two or three.
You've got two blues and a green.
Okay, all right. That's just more simplistic. I think when you get too many colors--
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's hard to manage.
Yep. Okay. We've got another comment now. Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to not repeat what Councilmember Stewart said, but her observation is pretty good that it was a lot about the brand. And we have 30,000 into this already. We're, we're going to have to rebrand trucks if we so decide. So there's a lot of cost just to get us to square one before we start buying wayfinding signs and so on. So that's sort of a concern. I make sure we think about how we're going to get a return. And then to what Councilmember Valdorama talked about as the business, you read that statement, it doesn't mention anything about economic development, business, work, play. It didn't talk about working in Sammamish, didn't talk about business in Sammamish. And if we're trying to promote an image and you're a business and you see this, it looks like we're backwards. So we got to be careful what we say in our words and attract what we want the city to look like in the years to come. And I think economic development is a key component, and we're missing it.
I have a few more lights now. Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Moran.
I love the logo.
Thank you. Councilmember Ross, did you have something else or, no, okay. Okay, I don't have any more comments up here. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Try to get the kookany on there.
Okay, so next we have an executive session. This is under potential litigation, RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 one I. I would anticipate 30 minutes. Okay, thank you. So I think we'll get back to order here. I think we, we wanted to inject, and we had intended to do this earlier in the meeting, but we forgot today is 9/11. And we just wanted to have just, if we can, just maybe 30 seconds of silence just so we can recognize those who lost their lives on this day in 2001. Thank you. Sorry, it's hard. Still. Okay, so under--
We never allow it to happen again.
So under unfinished business, we have a discussion on the traffic concurrency and level of service policy.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, after a long debate at the last meeting, we were unable to reach consensus on a preferred concurrency methodology, so we set the item aside to take it up again this evening. You have at your place a number of alternatives that have, that we've placed before you. Some of those you have considered at your last meeting. All of these kind of indicate both the commonalities that exist between these alternatives as well as the differences. It gives you some of the decisions that you need to complete documents. It gives you some of the decisions that you need to complete documents. It gives you an example of the timeframes to revise a comprehensive plan. And so we'll give that to the council this evening. Staff is here, and we're prepared to assist you in any way we can in helping your discussion. And I assure you that we look forward to doing any and all work that you would want us to add on to the work that you have before you. So I'll give that to the council for your debate.
Great. Thank you. I don't see any lights on, so I'm just going to start us off right off the shoot. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt level of service at intersections only as previously defined, I think as option four. Please, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm doing this wrong. That's the 43 intersections for the AM/PM. I'd also like to direct staff to work on a V over C.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Ross. Okay. He's not on. Councilmember Ritchie.
A question for staff as far as their timeframe for, or what they would need from us to build that V over C. And what, we're going to count on you to tell us what you need from us and kind of come back to us over the next several meetings to try to determine what you need from us and what that V over C will look like. And are you getting what you need from us right now over this option four?
Well, I'm going to start with, in terms of, from the level of service and intersections, I think council's been very clear there, so we don't need any more there with respect to the volume to capacity ratios. It's the same sorts of questions that we've brought to council, and it was in the decision tree before. So the time period that we're looking at, if we're looking at a Monday through Friday all weekday traffic volume, if we're looking at a Tuesday through Thursday, if we're looking at peak hour. So that's, you know, kind of the first question. The second question is if we're looking at directional or if we're looking at two-way capacities. And then the third question is actually related to the capacities that we're actually using. Are we using kind of the F dot-based capacities? Is there another capacity that council's interested in us looking at? We have, of course, the old vehicle-related capacities from T8. So those are all still questions that would need to be answered by council.
Okay. So just following up to make sure, I'm going to ask for an amendment to the motion that we direct staff within this motion to come back to us within the next 30 days with a decision tree. Some decisions that we can vote on for you or for you, for us, to be able to make those decisions within limits. So put a 30-day, the motion, my amendment, is to put a 30-day window on it to be able to come back to us with those decisions that you need from us.
Actually, may I add to that? The other question I think that staff have is where this would be applied, because we did come with that same decision tree for 244th. And so I guess the question is, are we talking about all segments within the city? Is it a subset of the segments within the city? Are we going back to corridors?
I think that that's really what we need to decide as a body. We're there, I think, that we're trying to figure that out. And I think the purpose, if I can, I think the purpose of the motion as it stands on the purpose of option four is to blend the two together, but to figure out how much of the V over C and applied where. So as one council member, I would ask that we get some help from you to determine where that makes sense. Option one, or 1A is across the city. 1B is on major-minor arterials. C is something else. And then we could debate that internally, but I would hope you can give us, from a professional standpoint, from the traffic engineering standpoint, to be able to come back to us and say, here are three or four, five choices that you could make, yet we're still getting in our V over C as far as the comp plan amendment is concerned. We're kind of putting a placeholder in there, but I don't want it to turn into something that kind of spins out for six months either. So we want to be able to get you some answers, because then you have follow-up work to do to try to get us back information so we can get our comp plan amended, right?
So let me just, if I can, just speak to my motion. I think I went intentionally vague on the V over C just to get us over this hump so that we can get to that public hearing. We can drill down further at that point if we want to on the V over C. If you want me to get more specific tonight, I mean, we certainly can, but I think the idea was get the V over C, but let's get to that public hearing with level of service at intersections next week.
Okay, can I, then I guess I'll say this. I'll withdraw my amendment. As long as the, from a legal standpoint, is the language in the motion and options four, as we have it here, is that placeholder sufficiently legal? Does it hold what we need it to do as far as being able to go to a public hearing without the actual extra detail that would be needed to actually amend the comp plan? Is that enough?
Yes, there's plenty to go forward to the public hearing. We'll need to have some tighter language, more definite language in the actual comp plan amendment that comes forward for adoption.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hornish.
I want to clarify and maybe make a motion to amend, but the V over C would be done as part of the comp plan or some other mechanism?
There would be a reference in the comp plan to a V over C, but the work wouldn't be completed until later, so we could do that as an interim development regulation later.
So the idea is, just again to clarify, we could then hold the hearing for intersections only, amend the comp plan, and outside of the comp plan, do some type of interim development regulation with a V over C. And that is your, I'm clarifying or amending your motion to make sure that it's an interim development ray for the V over C. All right.
And just with, perhaps this is just being redundant, but the comp plan amendment, and I think the mayor's motion contemplates that the comp plan amendment will have some reference to the V over C language in it.
But primarily intersections only with a soft reference to the V over C reference?
Yes.
Or to a calc. Okay.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes, if I can ask a couple of clarifying questions. So you're proposing option four with the, option four is defined here with determining all of the where we'll apply it and how we'll apply it later. And I guess one of my questions is, how is that different than the exercise that we went through in July and August? And I just ask that to understand so that I can understand how this time around will somehow be different, because the staff did take us through a decision tree. They came to us and said, do you want it on, you know, the whole city? Do you want it on major arterials, majors and minors? Do you want it on East Lake-Sammamish Parkway and 244th? Do you want it on 244th only? Do you want us to calculate it this way? So we went through that exercise once already, and I guess I just want to understand before I make a decision on voting for something, how would this time be a different process and lead us to a different result?
So I think that decision tree we got, was kind of hijacked right in the middle, and we didn't get to follow all the way through.
We did vote.
We did, but we didn't go all the way through that decision.
But there was a motion made, and we voted five to two on it. I went back and watched the meeting last night. And so I just want to understand how that's different.
I'm just simply trying to get us to the public hearing so that we can make some comp plan changes next week. And I think this allows us to do that with the potential of removal of the moratorium next week, and then we can go and work on that V over C. We have staff who work on that V over C. The moratorium discussion is obviously next week when we're dealing with the actual hearing, the public hearing. I'm trying to get us over the hump this evening.
Then I guess I would like to propose an amendment that says that we as a council, not that we time-box staff, but that we have to somehow put some guardrails on the body of the council if we were to go down this path so that we don't end up, because my fear is, based on our previous discussions, this is going to, again, delay the TMP, right? The work on the TMP will have to come after we determine this V over C. And so I would like to propose an amendment that council has to make a decision on the scope and the methodology for calculating the V over C in no less or no more than one month's time. So by the, what's today, the 11th? By the 11th of October, we have to have decided on how we're going to do that.
Can we look at a calendar to make sure that that coincides with a meeting?
Sure.
That might make more sense if we pick a meeting.
That is completely fair. It would be, actually, I think it is the 11th, because I think we have a meeting on the 2nd.
The 2nd, yes.
The 9th.
The 9th is there?
October 9th.
Okay, great.
Can we say that?
Then by October 9th.
October 9th. 2nd. 3rd.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Stewart, do you want to speak to your amendment at all, or you already did?
I'm pretty sure I already did.
Okay. Just making sure. Okay. So we have a lot more lights on. Councilmember Valderrama.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. First of all, option five includes the Florida Department of Transportation model looking at capacity. So as I understand what this is saying is, we're going to look at capacity under the Florida Department of Transportation.
Point of order, we're talking about the motion on the floor.
No, that's what I'm trying to understand.
But option five is not being discussed.
It's not option five. Option four.
No, no, no. But I'm looking, well, maybe we're talking about, I thought you were looking at alternative four.
No.
No, which?
Option four is level of service at intersections only.
Okay, so you're looking at alternative two. All right, I'm sorry.
I'm not looking at these, I'm not looking at these on this chart. My motion was that you do option four, which is level of service at intersections only.
Okay.
And then, oh, yes. So option four is up in the left-hand corner. And then I'm asking that we direct staff to work on a V over C.
Okay. And then my question, okay, I apologize. I was going to alternative four instead of alternative two here. So if you're looking at alternative two, I thought yesterday we had talked about that the, all right, last week, geez, things are blurring here. The C could take figuring out what that C is, and we've now put some guardrails on that we've got one month to come back into it. Sorry? The amendment is... The amendment is talking about, but last week, as I recall, there was talking about that that could take a substantial amount of time potentially to go through. At the same time, my concern goes to similar to what Councilmember Stewart had mentioned is, we have a TMP exercise that will also be looking at capacity. And again, the expense and the time that we spend to look at these roads now under this V over C, assuming it could be done in 30 days that we'll load on, that whole exercise will have to be repeated again at taxpayer expense under the TMP, because as soon as you suggest a new road or that, everything changes to go through. And so I just want to make sure, am I correct in that?
That is correct.
Do you have any more?
Sorry?
Are you, any more?
And then hold on one second. There's always more. So let's see. And then the other issue that concerns me is this segment methodology that we're trying to talk about. This is something that very early on, we specifically analyzed and didn't want segments and spoke vehemently, yourself, who made the motion specifically on that. And so now we're coming back, and I'm concerned that we're going back to things that we had left.
Point of order, we're talking about the amendment right now, right?
Well, that's, I'm reading alternative two. It has...
No, the amendment is...
The amendment is on the guardrails that the council put in decision.
All right. Well, then I'll reserve to come back a second round after that. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Moran. Okay. Councilmember Ritchie.
I support the measure, the amendment and the measure. I think we need to be forward-looking, not looking back on what we could have done before or said we would do before, and I think we need to be looking at what we can do going forward. I think this is a reasonable step going forward. It gets us to a public hearing. It allows us to look at the moratorium separately. It is the kind of iterative step that was intended, as I understand it, back a year ago when this moratorium came into place.
Councilmember Hornish.
The amendment ties our hands too tight, in my opinion. For that reason, I am not supportive of the amendment, but I am supportive of us moving forward to be able to make sure it gets something done. But I don't think we can agree that we will agree. There is a concept, you can't agree to agree. We can't say that we will do this. We can certainly try, but the amendment is that we will, and I don't think we can agree to do that.
Okay. I don't see any more lights. Is that a yes or no?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Ross.
So make sure there's clarity here. The amendment that Councilmember Stewart is proposing is putting the parameters of how to evaluate the process. We talked about whether it's directional or two-way. We talked about what type of capacity measure. It doesn't mean in that 30 days, we define what is the V over C ratios and other type of concepts and addresses. I think, I don't know, Councilmember Hornish raised a concern. It sounded a lot like we're going to complete all of that and get that all in the comp plan, and I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent of Councilmember Stewart's amendment is to just make sure we do our due diligence to get the staff moving on their part as early as possible so we can delay the TMP efforts as little as possible. It's just a matter of all of us working together to compress time as quick as we can. Am I capturing that correctly? And those V over Cs won't be in the comp plan, they'll be in the interim developer update later, sometime later, and hopefully quicker than, sooner than later.
May I clarify?
Yes.
So yes, my intent of my amendment is that I believe that at this point in time, the challenge that we have moving forward, you know, the enemy is, what is that saying, right? It's us, right? We're our own worst enemy here. So it's to put the parameters on us that we have to make the decision on the things that we're going to direct staff to do within 30 days. And I feel like we've already had a year of working on this, so, you know, I think we can make that decision in 30 days if we motivate ourselves, and if we put a time box on it, then we'll make a decision. If we don't put a time box on it, I feel like we'll continue to talk about it forever, and I don't want to continue to delay the TMP effort, which is the effort that will actually get us to fixing the problems, not just talking about them.
Councilmember Stewart, if I may just clarify, you said scope and methodology.
Correct.
I want to understand more specifically to understand if we can make that decision by October 9th. By scope, do you mean principal arterials and minor arterials, for example?
Correct. Like which roadways would we be applying the segments to, and how will we be calculating capacity, to be more specific?
Okay. And then by methodology, you mean what specifically?
I mean specifically, how are we going to calculate capacity? That seems to be what we've been stuck on. We can't agree on how to calculate capacity, right? The V over C calculations are pretty elementary. It's a simple division problem, once we all agree how to calculate the C. And so we need to agree on which methodology we're going to use to calculate capacity.
I might suggest that we not get hung up too much on what that C is, because we, as a legislative body, have control over defining, the C is pretty standard if you use a highway capacity manual. We can decide internally whether we want it to be 1.0, 1.5, or 2.0 as an accepted level of service for a segment.
I'm not talking about level of service. I said...
I understand not level of service at intersection, but I'm talking about a level of service for a segment.
I'm not talking about level of service. I'm talking about, what we seem to be hung up on is the methodology to calculate of how we're going to determine the capacity of a given segment. We cannot agree on what the value of C is for a stretch of 244th. And so my concern is, if we can't do that over a two-month period, how we're going to, what is that, a mile? We couldn't decide how to calculate the capacity of a roadway that was a mile long. I'm concerned that if we don't give ourselves some boundaries, we will not be able to determine how we're going to calculate the capacity potentially for the entire city, because we've reopened that all up again. So I want us to have to decide, we're going to do this, and whatever that takes, we're going to get it done, and we're going to determine how we calculate the capacity. The level of service is a different discussion, right? But the scope of what roadways is it going to apply to and what methodology are we going to use? If it's really simple on how we calculate C, great, then it won't be hard to hit the 9th.
So I want to ask staff a question based on the October 9th meeting to be able to produce for council options. Is that even, is that a reasonable timeframe?
Well, I, okay, you can start, and then I'll, I've got some additional questions and thoughts.
So the three options, as you can see, the one, two, three, the fourth through the sixth columns there where it says segment, segment capacity methodologies, those are the three ones that we've probably spent the most time on. The F dot method, HCM, and our own table T8. There are other methodologies... There are other methodologies that we've brought to the council, but those are the three that kind of have gotten some legs lately. If you want us to limit our evaluation to those three, you know, that will, that kind of direction will help us.
So sorry, I'm struggling to where you're looking at.
See where it says segment capacity methodologies, in the sort of the middle of that first page?
Oh, this, okay.
Those are the three methodologies, again, that we've been spending probably most of the time on lately. And although Kendra just whispered to me, she's not going to be here in mid-October.
Just on the 9th, I have a meeting in California at 8:00 AM on the 10th.
So what about the 16th? That's one additional week.
Oh, fine. But wait, I think you have to amend...
You'd have to amend your amendment.
Wait, did we learn, can I do that? Because it's already been seconded, I'm not sure that I can just do that.
And remake it.
Okay, I would like to withdraw my amendment.
Okay.
And then I would like to make a new amendment, that we, as a council body, decide on the segment capacity methodology by October 16th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I don't see any more lights for discussion, so let me repeat. The amendment is that council has to make a decision on scope and methodology by the October 16th meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Hands, sorry. So I was saying aye. Okay, and opposed? Okay, so by a vote of 4-3, it passes, so we will do that by the 16th.
Wait, who are the three?
4-3.
Yes.
Hornish, and who are the others?
Those that, Moran and myself, said, no, on the 16th. Okay, so now we will go back to the motion as amended. Motion is level of service at intersections, the AM and PM, this is option four, and directing staff to look at the V over C, with the boundaries that we have to make a decision on scope and methodology by the October 16th meeting. All those, oh, do we have more questions? Deputy Mayor Moran? Okay, councilmember Hornish?
Yeah, even though I was against, did not vote for the amendment, I like the motion even as amended, because I think it gives us a capability to move forward, gives a capability to have a hearing next week. We can then amend our comp plan, and we deal with the V over C outside of the comp plan, which allows us to move forward, and then we can talk about the moratorium next week. So I think this is a good solution.
Okay, I don't have any more lights on. So again, the motion level of service at intersections and directing staff to look at a V over C, scope and methodology need to be determined by the October 16th meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of 5-2, it passes.
Wait a second, what's a vote?
5-2.
Moran and Stewart.
I'm going to go nay. Still, it doesn't change the result, but I'm going to put a nay in there, just because of the segment.
Okay, by a vote of 4-3, it passes. Okay, so we actually got it done.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just have a couple of clarifying questions. Do you want us to limit our information to those three? FDOT, HCM, modified table T8? Do you want us to come up with some other new one that's not documented?
Council, councilmember Ritchie?
It would be my preference from this seat that you keep it limited to what information you have already spent an abundance of time gathering, rather than reinventing the wheel. I don't, I don't know that there is another option, and if there was, and you didn't present it, okay, there maybe there is, but I think what you've provided has the backing of many of the municipalities and states, and legal backing and precedent, so I would hope that you would utilize what you've already given us and put it in a format that allows us to make choice within limits. Thank you.
Councilmember Hornish.
I would be for limiting it to these three, and I would also say, let's not wait until the 16th, let's do it next week. Can you do it next week?
I'm sorry, we were trying to figure out what to put in your packet for next week. I'm sorry.
Well, you answered my question. I was hoping, my thought was, I'd like to limit to these three, to keep the scope for you guys smaller. But I would also like to start next week, not till October 16th, with these three, so we can start the discussions next week as to deciding the segment capacity methodology and the scope of the arterials versus major and minors. I don't want to wait till the 16th.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, I'm just, so I'm on vacation next week.
I think our concern would be hitting a packet deadline, so we were talking about the packet for next week, and...
That's tomorrow, yeah.
To the direction that you've provided us with, essentially, you know, if you're going with option four plus this VC methodology, our understanding of what would go in your packet tomorrow, or whenever it makes it to you guys, but for staff for tomorrow, would be essentially what we presented back in July, plus some short concise policy language around the city's desire to also incorporate a volume-to-capacity methodology in there. And that would ideally hit your packet next week. With respect to going through these methods, I think to have an informed discussion with council, we'll need to be able to provide you with some information in advance. Unfortunately, that level of information isn't something that we're going to be able to make into a packet tomorrow. What I would put forth, and I haven't talked to Cheryl, so she may correct me if I'm wrong, I think I, you know, plan to be here on October 2nd. Potentially, that's a date when we could start having that discussion, and then continue it on October 16th.
Councilmember Stewart.
But that, but my idea is limited to those three, so that we don't get other new options, and keep yours, so you know what your scope is that you're presenting to us.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, Mayor, if I recall, in discussing the FDOT methodology, there were some questions about that, and so, so I would like to get the council members who had questions about that, let's get those on the table so that we can make sure that staff can address those, because that may or may not really be a viable option, it's already been voted against. So I don't want to, I don't want to waste staff time re-presenting something that isn't going, has no chance of passing, so that would be one thing. And then the other thing is, could we not wait until the 2nd, but again, potentially have some twos and threes meetings, or share some information via email that we can start to read and digest, so that we don't wait until the 2nd? Because of our meeting schedule and just the way it falls, we have some time here, and I wouldn't want to lose some of that time. So I would ask if you could to get the council members that had concerns over FDOT to, kind of, let's get those on the table and either say we're going to seriously look at FDOT because it's viable or not.
Yep, I have it scribbled down to make mention of, I'd like to clarify, if we're going to be looking at the FDOT methodology, whether we're going to be using that generalized planning, or whether we're going to swing back and use the conceptual planning, which the FDOT manual says you're supposed to use, and if we're not going to, why, and what's the difference?
Absolutely, well, thank you. We have looked into that over the past week. So we, during, during the comments, and we went back through the video, you, Mayor, had mentioned from the FDOT, you know, kind of, and we actually found the section that you were referring to, talking about the LOS plan, and then it refers to ART plan, HIGH plan, and FREE plan. So LOS plan is a suite of software, which includes those three that I mentioned, ART highway, ART, FREE plan, and HIGH plan. Just the first three letters give you, give you a little hint of what they're talking about. So ART plan is arterial planning, FREE plan is freeway planning, and HIGH plan is highway planning. So we can kind of take HIGH plan and FREE plan off the table. So we're left with ART plan. So we downloaded that suite of software, and a few things. One, I had some concerns, it asked for a lot of parameters in there, and a lot of parameters that quite candidly were not going to have for some amendments. So for example, for each of the segments, it asks for you to put in the intersection that's on that segment's signal timing. Well, we have a lot of segments that don't have a signal on there, so it's impossible to put in a cycle length. And so it continues to ask for a lot of parameters that in some cases, we would have to use a lot of professional judgment, and based on kind of our previous experience with council, that's probably not a direction that we as staff interpreted that you want us to go. We did look more into the generalized planning methodology, and to quote from FDOT, "Generalized planning is most appropriate when a quick level of service volume in the ballpark determination of LOS is needed, or for future long-range estimates." The default values used for generalized planning tools have been used, have been extensively researched, and represent the most appropriate statewide values. So I understand there are reservations at the council level, and I'm certainly not trying to diminish those, but in our assessment of the tools offered by FDOT, we continue to believe that the generalized planning tables would be the most appropriate in this case for a concurrency application. Now, what I will say is that if we were going anywhere beyond, do we have, you know, volume-to-capacity ratio, if we were trying to define a turn pocket length or infrastructure, actual infrastructure needs and define what that would be? We absolutely concur, you need better tools, and we would actually skip beyond the conceptualized planning and go straight to the operational planning, which is city practice. But in this case, we actually do feel from FDOT, that's the most appropriate tool.
Okay, so the second thing that I want to ask about in consideration of where we're going, we don't have a traffic engineer per se working on this, and is that something that we need to onboard in this in order to help facilitate getting something moving along?
I've actually had a traffic engineer working on this project.
Okay, so we have somebody that will be in the background? I just want to make sure we have all resources on deck to hit this targeted date.
Yes, no, actually, that's, I've been using traffic engineers to kind of advise me through this process.
Okay, okay.
Mayor, in addition, the city's two traffic engineers are also reviewing the data.
Okay.
So we do have a lot of technical eyes on the results.
Okay. Councilmember Hornish?
Fair question, but I, and I really appreciate the FDOT information, because I was the one to understand that, but we don't need to talk about that tonight. It's already 9:40. We need to move on. We've got a decision. I think we've got, as long as staff understands where we're going, I think we need to move on with the agenda.
I want to make sure that you, so are we in consensus that they're going to look at these three, though?
Is there a consensus there?
Yes.
Is that what we want, to have them look at, these three?
That's what I'm...
Okay.
Will the council, I guess the question, though, is, will the council members who were, who were opposed to FDOT, are they open to reconsidering it? Because otherwise, it's not worth them bringing that information back.
That's why I ask the questions I asked, because I wanted to understand what they have now researched, at least, but at least this gives us more than one choice. I would rather have multiple choices come back to us for a V over C, as opposed to just simply, here you go, this is what we came up with.
And the answer, Jim.
Yeah. Good? Okay. Let's try and get out of here by 10. So we'll save the hugs for later. Okay, so next, we have a discussion, there's the mayor's opioid letter. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to look that over. So, Mr. City Manager, shall I turn it over to you? Or not? Did you...
You had another report in there before, the city manager.
No, I, not on my...
Oh, we're on the opioid, oh, sorry.
Yeah, we're on the opioid. I don't have anything to present on this issue, Madam Mayor. You have the letter before you, it's fairly straightforward. I think it's one of those letters, it'd be hard to not want to send forward.
Okay, so can we maybe just, if there isn't any discussion on it?
I move that we sign the letter.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, no, no.
Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, I will sign the letter. Next, we have King County's Executive Dow Constantine's inquest proposal, process proposal.
Madam Mayor, this, this one's a little bit more complicated. I'm going to call on Chief Bennett to come up and discuss this issue with you.
You're really brief. Cutting the mics for him to breathe.
Be really brief if it's not on. So basically, this is a letter that was set out for mayor's elected officials of cities to sign. So there's a movement to change the King County inquest process, which has always been a fact-finding process. So a matter of, did the death occur? How did the death occur? Was it by gunfire from the officer, or whatever method the officer used? So it's very factual. And then, after that process is done, it goes to the prosecutor, and they determine whether or not to charge. So it used to be called a coroner's inquest, but that, that process was given over to the King County Executive. And so, again, it's always been a fact-finding, there's a list of like six questions they ask the panel, you know, did it occur at this time? Did the officer fear for his life? You know, so on and so forth. So this movement by this particular group to Dow Constantine is to change it to a process where there's opening testimony, the county provides an attorney to the family of the person who's deceased, there's opening statements from the person's family that's deceased, and on and on and on and on. So part of the, part of the concern from the King County Chiefs Association is that, given that process, there's a high potential that the officer won't even be there. And a lot of the conversations around the King County Chiefs meetings and the Washington State Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association is, you know, to what end? Is this going to be something peaceful, when you have a process where these opening statements and this emotional testimony in what is supposed to be a fact-finding process? And then a jury that just, it, it becomes something that appears it'll become very adversarial between the officer and the victim's family, because obviously, the victim's family is going to be upset. So this letter is a report, which you should have in your packet, basically is saying, and I spoke with the sheriff earlier this evening, and her position is, let's keep the inquest process the way it is. We're the only county that has this particular process. So part of the concern of the King County Chiefs Association is, let's say it's Noomish County deputy or Pierce County deputy gets involved in a King County incident, they're not governed by those, those rules. So again, the sheriff's feeling is that, keep the process the way it is. Dow Constantine issued the initial report, the two sides came to meet, they, they didn't come to an agreement. Dow Constantine came to the King County Chiefs meeting and spoke about, you know, trying to come to an agreement. He was going to edit the requests of these particular political group or groups that are trying to get this changed. He has not presented that yet to the sheriff, so again, she's in support of continuing the process the way that it is. And what, what the sheriff's hope is, and what WASPIC and the Fraternal Order of Police and Compass, and WASPIC being the Washington State Police Chiefs and Sheriffs, and the King County Chiefs Association, and the East Side Chiefs Association, is that I-940 is going to the ballot in November. And there's already an agreement for I-940 to include the language of 3003, which basically helps address this process of what is an independent inquest. So really, the sheriff would like, as would all those groups I just mentioned, let's let this play out through I-940 before we start changing the current inquest process.
Very good. Councilmember Ritchie?
Thank you, and thank you, Chief, for the information. I move that we direct the mayor to sign on behalf of the council and the city in support of this letter.
Second.
Seconded, did you want to speak to your motion?
That's awesome.
Okay. Councilmember Hornish?
Yeah, I wanted to, can I ask a question? The 3003, I thought, is not incorporated in...
It is not.
That's, okay, so, and this is be in support to try to blend those two, asking Dow Constantine to blend them to the extent he can, if you change anything at all.
Well, what, what's happened is I-940, so I-940 was put forth, the, the specific political groups that are requesting change...
As an initiative.
And transparency as an initiative, actually met with the people, the officers and law enforcement staff, to say, listen, I hear what you're, you're wanting to do with I-940 and changing the language, you know, with malice, and so on and so forth. And so they, they had a lot of conversation, and they agreed to this language of 3003, adding it to I-940. But then, the court heard it and said, no, just I-940 goes on the ballot. Well, there's agreements between all parties, or right now, there's agreements between all parties, even if I-940 passes, they'll all agree to still try to institute 3003 to the I-940. So we'll, it'll be an interesting November.
And I think that's what this letter asked Dow Constantine to do, too.
It's like, let's wait and, yeah.
Yeah, right, okay.
Let's wait.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so just to clarify, the letter is asking Dow... we see what the legislature does with I-940 and the supplemental House Bill 3003. So, it's just asking him to wait and let that process play out, and then, we'll see where that goes.
Yeah. I mean, the letter is basically saying, let's use caution, and let's be careful about how we're moving forward.
Councilmember Ross?
I think my question was answered. You're supporting the Dow Constantine letter, or the sheriff is?
The letter to Dow Constantine.
To Dow.
The sheriff totally supports, yes.
Okay. So, that's what we're being asked to do, the sheriff supports.
Yes. I made sure that, yes, she absolutely supports it.
Got it.
Okay. All those in favor of signing the letter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. By a vote of 7/0, I will sign the letter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have city manager's report. We need to do the approval of the recruitment of a permanent city manager. Mr. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is an issue that's near and dear to my heart, especially with each passing meeting.
Let you count the days.
During your city council meeting of August 23rd, council discussed process for the selection of city manager, and you looked at three options and referred that to a subcommittee of the council, which was made up of your deputy mayor, and Councilor Ross, and Councilor Stewart. And I believe you have a report from that subcommittee, and I think Councilor Ross will be delivering that report this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Malchow and city council members, following your direction from the council meeting of October 23rd, the RFP review subcommittee, composed of Deputy Mayor Moran, council member Stewart, and myself, met with staff members, interim city manager Larry Patterson, senior HR analyst Manny Bissard, and management analyst Mike Sugg, to review the various recruiting methods discussed at the August 23rd meeting, and bring forth a recommendation for your consideration. These methods and our recommendations are outlined in the agenda build. After discussion of each approach's pros and cons, we are recommending the council authorize the interim city manager to release an RFP for city manager recruitment processes. We concluded that this approach is the most prudent for the city at this time, because of the following reasons. One, limited time and staffing in city's HR division, and absence of communication staff to assist with promoting the recruitment. Two, ability of an executive search firm to perform a nationwide search because of their access to a large pool of candidates, professional managers, and management organizations. Three, transparency of process with an outside consultant conducting this recruitment. Four, comfort for candidates and confidentiality, submitting their name for consideration during the initial round of the process. Five, ability of a firm to guide such processes and help coordinate council, staff, and public's involvement during site visits and interviews. Six, ability of a firm to do initial background inquiries, and if desired, final background checks. And finally, seven, the cost savings of having staff perform a search is not significant, because the essential duties of the dedicated HR person assigned to recruitment would likely require additional resources from a temporary service to perform them. In discussing the approaches and reviewing the draft RFP before you, we looked at two RFPs from other cities, which are contained in the agenda packet. We also relied heavily on Mr. Patterson's expertise. Mr. Patterson has conducted five city manager recruitments and various department head executive searches. Given the scrutiny involved in such a hire, the council may want to engage a background investigator to conduct final background checks on leading candidates. This is a decision that is not part of this recommendation and can be discussed as a separate item. The cost may be part of the contract with the consulting firm. Deputy Mayor Moran, council member Stewart, and myself, along with Mr. Patterson, Ms. Bissard, and Mr. Sugg, are prepared to answer any questions you may have regarding our recommendation.
Councilmember Hornish?
I move that we authorize the interim city manager to release an RFP for an executive search firm to perform city manager recruitment services.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Hornish, did you want to speak to your motion?
No, I think...